Good evening, everyone. Apologies for the technical difficulties. Welcome to the Board of Education Workshop Meeting. Today is Tuesday, February 7. With me this evening, I have in-house with us Janine Randolph, Kara Nelson-Bakey, Sherri McCready-Brown, Dotfria Zima, and Mary Ellen Flaherty-Ludwig. And if we can please rise for the three of you. Sorry about that. So our first item on the agenda.
Nuestro punto, nuestro primer punto de la agenda.
Approval of school-sponsored trips, we had discussed.
Y vamos a discutir estos otros puntos.
To vote to move them forward.
Para seguir hacia adelante.
For Norwalk High School, IG.
Para la escuela superior de Norwalk.
One is Italy, one is Ecuador and Palapagos.
When no.
I don't know if the public can hear us with that. Okay. So motion to approve school trips. Janine, seconded by Kara, all in favor? Unanimous vote, thank you. So this evening, our topic today is the district strategic plan goals, mid-year update. We have a lot to discuss this evening, a lot to go over. I'm sure there's going to be lots of questions this evening. And I am going to transfer the meeting now to Dr. Alexandra Estrella.
Thank you, Chair person, Papio. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us as we are at the midpoint of this academic school year. And we take this opportunity to highlight the great work that has happened throughout our district. Most importantly, work that is driven by our strategic plan and our goals that have been prioritized for this year by our board. Today, we are going to engage in a discussion that's going to be formulated in a fish gallery fishbowl structure. We will be live streaming the event, but we will also be recording every fishbowl individually and uploading those fishballs for further clarity and visibility for the public tomorrow. Before we immerse into the fishbowl gallery, I want to just preface what our work is grounded around, which is our mission where we have.
In transmission.
So like I was saying, just starting off with highlighting where our work is grounded around our mission, focus around all students graduating future-ready, and also civically having a clear what it is to be civically responsible and globally aware of the ever-changing society and world that we live in. Also, I want to highlight our vision, which is focused around making sure that all students across Norwalk are prepared for the world and the life that they aspire to be. But most importantly, that they are, that their learning experience is built, is building a more equitable and just world for them and the people that they are, they will be serving in the future. Want to highlight also our values, prefacing the importance of maximizing every child's potential, putting excellence in everything that we do, making sure that we engage in equitable processes that highlight our diversity and inclusive learning environment, making sure that as we engage in the work, we are focused around our, our people, those individuals that are helping educate our students, whether they are our teachers, our educators, school leaders, our custodian and other personnel that continuously make sure that our buildings are up to par to welcome our students. Making sure that we keep creativity and innovation at the forefront of the work that we do day in and day out. And that we're constantly thinking about how we are continuously improving and modifying practice so that we ensure not only that we are up to date and looking at the best, most practical, practical ways of supporting our scholars, but also that we are constantly refining our craft to ensure that all students succeed.
My clicker behaves. And for the public, Colin Houston has joined us.
Grounded in our strategic plan, our five strategic priorities, one which I mentioned earlier are focused on future readiness, equity, excellence, high-quality instruction and support as well as engagement. We look at these five priorities not in isolation, but in, in connection to one another. They're hype, they're hyperlinked and interconnected in everything that we do. And they themselves are also immersed in an interconnected way as we think about our work and moving our scholars and staff forward. There are six goals that are driving our efforts this year. These six. These six, these six goals are derived from a strategic plan and further emphasize the work that we're doing amongst all the departments across the district. The first is around strengthening individual student access. Our second goal is focused about around our business and operations department as well as integrating our finance department, making sure that we follow our three-to-five-year facilities plan, also making sure that we're looking at our facilities on an annual basis to ensure that they are suitable learning environments for all of our students across the district. And most importantly, continuing to update and refine in collaboration with, with the city, a five-year capital plan as well as thinking about ways in which we can further extend that plan and looking at a scope within the next 25 years and how we can continue to rehabilitate our facilities. Our third goal is focused around our human resource department and finance as well as business and operations. And it's tailored around really refining what we are doing as a system, want to increase diversity within the organization, find the most effective ways of minimizing costs, but increasing the capability of our organization and servicing our students well. Our fourth goal is focused on instructional leadership development. It is critical for us to do, in order for us to do our work well, that our school leaders as well as other personnel are equipped with the tools that they need to successfully move in the path forward. Our fifth goal is around the development and refinement of instructional programs across the organization, ensuring that every child has an opportunity to have access to a high-quality education and making sure that we establish professional learning supports and structures to enable that to happen. Our sixth goal is focused around ensuring that families are provided equitable opportunities and access to resources across the organization. Examples of that you will hear today as the team presents, but most importantly, making sure that we bridge any gap that might exist in providing our families with access to programs and resources to ensure that their children have access to all the learning models that our district have, has, and most importantly, to make sure that we are in constant communication and constantly engaging with our parents to learn about their needs and then in turn, continue to modify our system to ensure that we're providing them access by enabling or finding resources to meet their needs. So those are the six goals that we will be engaging in deep, in a deeper conversation this evening. The way in which we will engage in this discussion.
My clicker allows. Give me a hand there.
Is through a gallery fishball protocol. We have three stations and each station, you will have members of the cabinet presenting on one, two, in some cases, three goals or one goal. And they will go in depth in discussing where we are at this point of the, in the year, at meeting or exceeding these goals, where there might be potential pitfalls that we are looking to further address. And then most importantly, what is the work forward between this point and to the end of the year to ensure that the goals that the board has set forward for us to meet are met or exceeded. So we have three stations. In station one, we're going to focus in goal one and six. In station two, we will focus in goals two, three, and four. And in station three, we're going to focus on in goal five. We're going to ask at this point for the board members to go to the stations where they're going to start the gallery fishbowl. In station one, we have Diana Papio, Mary Ellen Flaherty-Ludwig, and Colin Houston. In station two, we have Dotfria Zima, Kara Bakey, and Erica DePomo. And in station three, we have Sherri McCready-Bridgette, Sherrell Harris, and Janine Randolph. If the board members can, please move to their assigned station. We are organizing these fishballs where the first 15 minutes, the team will be presenting the, and then 15 minutes for Q and A and discussion.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining. In this station, we are really going to be focusing on, there's another one there. Sorry. We're going to be really focusing on goal one and goal six. Goal one is really around strengthening our individual success plans for students. And there's a lot in that goal around curriculum, professional development, SCL and counseling supports, specialized learning. And then we're going to talk about goal six. And goal six is really the work that we are doing around the family center. And so we have members of the schools team here. I think you've had a chance to meet each of them, but I'll just do quick introductions. If everyone can just, you want to start Bridgette?
Bridget Adams, Executive Director of Specialized Learning.
Stacy Bergen, Educational Administrator for Curriculum and Professional Learning.
Frances Sais, Educational Administrator for Multilingual Learners and Family Center Supervisor.
And so this is the schools team station because we have a big portion of the work and we will go through each different layer. And we have some artifacts that we've provided to just support what we're going to talk about in the presentation. So our first, we're going to start with curriculum professional development. We'll then go to developing teacher capacity for teaching reading. We'll talk about SRBI, SCL and counseling, and specialized learning.
Okay. So one of the things that we've been concentrating on this year was the idea of getting better at getting better. And so it's really important to look at the pedagogy that's going on in classrooms in order to isolate areas of need, to coach into those with, at the, at the school level, and then across schools, and then across the district. And so we've taken sort of a bird's eye view and we created, in your folders, if you want to open those up, there is an artifact regarding the professional learning that takes place across the district. And the beautiful thing about a professional learning plan is that we start at looking at sort of the big ideas, so the beginning of the school year, and then we boil it down to then gradually releasing control to the schools so that schools then can address the needs that they have on a sort of day-to-day basis. Okay? We were able to this year thus far, provide three professional learning experiences for teachers across the district in various areas of need. So there were options for special education, there were options for, in the art of teaching reading, in curriculum writing, in looking at discourse in classrooms. It was sort of like a choose-your-own sort of want or need, right? And so with that, we have some data regarding professional development feedback. We have a 79% satisfaction rate. And I think it's important to also say that within that 79%, there's an additional 13%, which really brings us to like an 84% satisfaction rate of people who were sort of like on the cusp. They had some suggestions for us that we took and we implemented it and for the ongoing professional learning. Okay?
Sorry, what is, so did I add a two?
Yeah, so the, so if we're looking at this data, we're looking at levels numbers fours and number fives.
Oh, I see, okay.
Which are sort of like good and very good.
Got it.
So the totality of those reach 79%. And then there are people who scored us at a level three, which is about 13%.
Yeah.
And those are like the people that are midway, they're sort of like beige. And so we, we look at that and we add it together. And so if we looked at really on a scale of three to five as being like, you know, good and very good, we're really more at like an 84% satisfaction rate, which is pretty good, I think. That is pretty good. Okay? While we're helping the teachers getting better at getting better, we're also getting better ourselves. And so we partnered with Unbound Education this year. And one of the things across the district, we have educational administrators, school administrators, and teacher leaders engaging in professional learning with Unbound Education to really take a deep look into what is standard-based curriculum? And what does that look like in, in print and then in our classroom? And this directly supports the work that's being done with our curriculum writing. So one of our goals, or a big goal that we have this year, is really looking at the writing of the curriculum. And so this document tells the story of what our proposed plan is for the remainder of the year. So we were very ambitious in the beginning of the spring and summer last year to really think about rewriting our MLL foundations course at the high school level. We wrote our units one and two. We rewrote units one and two for MLL development and the transition English curricula. It was the first time any modifications to those documents had been done in quite some time. We created opportunities for kids to really, for our MLL students to really engage with on-level classroom appropriate texts and strategies in the classroom. Then we move into the work that needs to be done for the remainder of the year. We're going to write the remainder of the units and the corresponding assessments. In the world of our ELA electives at the 12th grade level, we are beginning that work this spring. We are currently surveying the courses right now, seeing what's being offered, what that enrollment is looking like, what does the scope and sequence look like in order, once we conclude that audit, we then, we will establish a committee and move into the rewriting of the units of study. World language, we took a deep dive into that last year and realized that that curriculum also needed a rebirth. And so we established a committee last year, they met about four or five times, and we were able to revamp a majority of the Spanish courses. And then our goal is to weave in the other courses over the next sort of 18 months. For business, in the world of business, one of the things that we were looking at within the, the business department was really, how are we ready for the 21st century? What are the courses that we're teaching? And one of the things that we realized is there was a lot of double courses that were kind of very similar. And so we trimmed that down really to streamline offerings for students so that they, we could get the best bang for our buck. And we also came up with a five-year plan. So, and the teachers really did the bulk of that work to think about what is, what are our kids looking forward, really going to need, and how do we plan backwards for that? Unfortunately, we did not get to social studies this year, and no fault of our own. The state has delayed the approval of the new framework. So in consultation with the state, it's going to a consultancy group for June maybe. And so they're talking about maybe next January. So we're looking at a whole additional year where we have to sort of put a pause on the social studies curricula till next spring. And so we can begin to look at, what we do always, begin to look at what's not working in the classrooms within the units of study based upon teachers' feedback. And we do make adjustments along the way. But the total overhaul of that curricula won't come down until the state says we can move forward. That was a lot.
The only other piece that I just want to add is that one of our goals was centered around writing 2K curricula.
Oh, yes.
I provided, we provided a sample in the document. Right now, there would be 10 units throughout this year. We are through four of them at the midway point. And we're currently writing units five and six. And that will be something that will be completed by the end of the year. But this was not something that we had. And so we really wanted to be able to create a framework. And one of the things that's really nice is it is, it's called the World of Wonders and it is tied to our, our resource that we use in K5. So it's really preparing our preschoolers for the transition to kindergarten. All right, we're going to move on. So the second part of this goal is our developing teacher professional capacity. And one of the things that we started last year was the letters training and that just is the language essentials of teachers of reading and spelling. And we have a cohort, we will have 68 educators that will graduate this two-year program. And then our next steps, right now, like they did four units last year, they do four units this year, and then they graduate. And then our focus is to have these experts be our trainers for building capacity across schools. Because a lot of the people that are in this are our coaches, our improvement teachers, our teacher leaders. And they can continue that work with our, with our teachers in the building. And I just, I think that, that we're really excited about this. And it's, it's a long, it's a long process, but it is really helping to prepare teachers to be in the science of reading. The other, another goal that we had was around dyslexia. And this year, we partnered with CIRC. In our November 8th PD, every certified staff member in the district participated in this training. And I think for me, one of the nicest feedback that we received was from a teacher. And I quoted the teacher because she, her child had dyslexia. And so her response was, "The dyslexia PD was like reliving my child's journey. I'm so happy MPS is finally moving in this direction. There's, we're hoping that there will be more training for regular ed teachers." And so I just think that that was a really positive impact. Even high school teachers found a lot of value in, in the resources that were provided. And I actually provided a copy of that presentation to you. And I also provided one of the letters handouts as well.
So this CIRC just.
That is, that's the presentation from CIRC that was provided. The next level of our work around teaching reading, it really comes down to our literacy. It used to be our literacy clinic that we had, but we still have the team. And that team is building capacity across the district. And so they have provided training on Wilson reading, which we got 25 free seats, it's a multisensory approach, and we've been able to work that in to help support our teachers. We also have had Linda Mood Bell training and Writing Revolution for our middle school social studies teachers. This is training that they've been able to then transfer into their classroom. The middle school teachers, social studies in particular, they're using it during WINTIME to support writing and to support the work that's happening during WINTIME. And so that team, it's, it's a team of two, but their real mission is to support teachers with the instruction around reading and writing. And so they go off in the schools and they work with maybe one teacher, they may work with a team of teachers. And I provided a copy of some of the work that they've done throughout this year so that you have evidence of that work. But because one of the, one of the pieces we've talked about is that the Literacy Center or Dyslexia Center used to be a place, it's not a place. The mission is really about building teacher capacity. Doesn't matter where they are, it's that they are going out and supporting teachers and working with our staff. So we've seen a lot of positive outcomes from this work. We're going to transition to SRBI. And this year, a couple of the pieces that we've really worked on, and I want to, I'm very excited about our WIND block and the interventions that have happened. And our next curriculum meeting is going to be really focused on this work because we're at the midway point right now. But we've been able to utilize teacher professional development days in grades K through eight to train our teachers in research-based programs. And so part of the work has been, a team went into schools and we did walkthroughs. And we walked through, look, with the focus centered around when and how are we supporting this block of time? And we worked with the leaders in the building and we've provided feedback. And we've really seen this idea of this time become such a valuable use of time in supporting our teachers, in supporting our leaders, in providing research-based programs. The other piece that Dr. Perry did this year is she created PLCs. And so we have interventionists across the district, but providing them time to come together and work collaboratively on professional development. They also created a problem of practice on, on something they're going to work on. And they've been able to bounce it off of other people's ideas, which has been really beneficial. We've gotten a lot of positive feedback from these PLCs, from our improvement teachers, because they're not just on their own, because in every building, we may have one reading improvement teacher, one math improvement teacher. Now they get to come together and learn from each other. I talked about the walkthroughs. One of the other components this year is the Reading Buddies Program. And that we've partnered with NEF. And they, there's a focus on third graders. But really, the focus is bringing in retired teachers, bringing in someone who wants to support. And we've been able to roll this out already at two schools, and we're expanding to another three schools. It really depended on getting volunteers. So what does this all mean? At this point in the middle of the year, in looking at grades four to eight, we've seen a 5% decrease in students required for summer school, which is a, our goal was to really reduce by 10%. And we haven't even looked at K3 yet. They finished their middle-of-the-year testing tomorrow, and then we'll have that data. That's 15 minutes.
I know.
We're not there. So, but it is, we, we are really excited. And I want, I provided a couple other pieces of data for you. One of them is the number of students middle of the year, that's 5%. Last year, we had 881 students that were required for summer. This year, right now, we have 837. So we still have work to do, but it's a 5% decrease. The other goal that we're looking at is the number of students below the 40th percentile. Last year at this time, it was 3,800 students for math. We're at 3,053. We've had a 753% decrease in the number of students below the 40th percentile, which is huge. Now for reading, we went from, we went from 3,039 down to 2,000. We had a 1,000% decrease this year. And that means that students are going above the 40th percentile, which means our interventions are really having a positive impact on student learning. The third town, if that's where you are looking for.
Yes, that is what I'm looking for.
SCL and counseling, we're going to move over to the fourth town. And in SCL and counseling, all of our schools have counseling support. We have elementary school, really the focus is on SCL lessons in the classroom and more whole group. They still work with students one-on-one. And then in the secondary schools, a couple of things I want to highlight are, we've been able through a partnership to bring in a drug and alcohol counselor into our high school and an LGBTQ plus counselor. And that's a partnership that we have had with the Triangle Community. We are also developing our health curricula, so there's a lot of curricula work happening. The state rewrote the. They rewrote, they made a framework. And so our health teachers have been engaging throughout this year in rewriting the curriculum. We created scope and sequence already. And now they're coming together next week and they're going to continue that work. And I provided a timeline for you of the health curricula, the, of work that's been happening throughout this year. And we have a partner that is supporting us in that work as we develop this new curriculum. The other layer that I want to highlight is the DESA survey, which, which is new. So we've done a lot of work around SRBI academic interventions. And this DESA survey, I provided you with a copy of where we were in the fall. It shows us that 10% of our students needed more support. This is going to give us the data to support SCL interventions or behavior interventions. And it shows across the grade, the different students that are needing support. So we've been able now to transition not just academic interventions, but also the SCL behavior interventions as well. And we use that data to support that work. And we use that data to support that work. Another layer is the Wingman Foundation Peer Leadership Program. And this program has really been able to pro, building student leaders. We have it in one of our elementary schools at Fox Run and I provided some pictures for you about the work they're doing at Fox Run. It's, it's so funny because when I was talking with Fox Run, they're like, make sure you show them the Wingman cards. And so the, what they do with these- No, they, they actually, they're laminated cards that they use. And what they do is they have older students come together with younger students and they have to find each other and have a conversation. And so it's really about building, um, inter, like positive relationship. They pair them. So if I have the ace, I have to find another ace in the room and then they have a con, there's prompts that they follow. But it's really about building up student leadership, peer leadership. And then our Triangle Community Center, we have been able to provide the training to eight of our twelve elementary schools. We have two that are happening this month and then we have two that will be happening in large, that will fit all twelve schools. And then as I mentioned already, we have a counselor that supports our secondary schools. They're at both, um, they support both high schools and right now two middle schools. And they've been able to like pull lunch groups at different schools and really supporting students. We've had a lot of positive feedback about this work and this really was the partnership with the city. So, um, Triangle Center with Norwalk Public Schools and Norwalk as well. So really great work happening.
And then specialized learning. We have a focus on two goals, the first being that a hundred percent of all of our students will transition from IUP Direct to our new system. And the second goal being that we'll be implementing year two of our 2020 audit that I've referenced in a few of our conversations previously. And in the interest of time, since you've heard me speak quite a bit to both of these goals, I'll just briefly try to tie some of the strings together. With our ultimate goal in specialized learning to be that the mindset shift to this understanding that specialized learning is not a place anymore ever again, but rather a service that occurs within all of this work that is outlined through the goal. As I listen to the presentations just at the table, as I'm embedded in this work, I'm excited to talk about service, not a place mindset as I listen to the pieces about the literacy clinic, no longer just being a specialized learning service, but a general education service. We see Devro and all of the work around mental health that used to live in just special ed, no longer does. Because we are truly working toward the goal of coherence in that special education is in fact that service and potentially for all. In terms of CTSEDS, we've talked a bit about this more toward the beginning of the year. We've worked in professional development opportunities for staff, for families, for administrators. And in some places, even with students looking at their own IUPs to shift to the system. As we're sitting here looking at each other today, ninety-eight percent of the students who shifted to CTSEDS either through an annual review or a reevaluation to date have started. They're either finalized, completed, or started. This system is not without its problems and as a state, and certainly here in Norwalk, we are working through all of what we're lovingly calling glitches to be able to finalize and bring everything through into compliance. And that parent engagement carries forth, not just with helping folks understand this new system, but also all of this work that we're doing in shifting the mindset. I could certainly go on for quite some time about our systems and some of the updates that we've made, new systems we've drafted and the work in our future. But in the interest of time, I'll leave you with the artifacts that are here. There are several examples of the work that's being done in the department and throughout the district. And I'm always happy to have conversations to talk through any of them. How'd I do? Go ahead. You wanna highlight them specifically?
No, the, the one thing that I really wanna talk about though, sure, just because it's, it's really exciting for me is really the focus around co-teaching. Because this is really a huge focus of the department and not just the specialized learning department, but also the MLL department. And so between the two departments, we've really made a, a huge focus on supporting co-teaching. And I think of one of our special ed administrators who's working with two of her schools and actually pulling the co-teaching teams together, created a Google Classroom where they're providing resources, they're coming together, they've been, and the teachers that have been involved in that have really provided positive feedback, be able to step out of the school, to be able to work together and to really be able to build their practice of co-teaching. So I, I think that there is a lot of work happening in that regard. And I think that it's important to highlight that where we were last year where co-teaching was in very few places, it happened. But we've seen a huge increase because we've worked on professional development with our principals around co-teaching. The MLL team has been going into schools around co-teaching, modeling co-teaching. And then our specialized learning team has also been focused because we know that that is a best practice for instruction. The last piece that we're going to discuss, and I have to get to goal six. And Ms. Sais has her folder to give you.
Yes.
Because when we get to goal six, it really is talking a lot about the family center. And I just wanna get there and then we'll have time for questions. So that's communications, okay, so.
So in your packet on the right side, the, one of our goals is really to increase parent traffic and parent engagement. And the family center is the center of it all, the families, the children, our scholars are the ones that really, really, we are here to service. And the family center has been a hub for all those resources and all those services. One of the important datas that I wanna share with you about how we met our goal, exceeded our goal is that during COVID and the returning families from last year, really was really difficult to bring them back in and really engage them. So we've done a lot of research, we're through a consulting company that did a lot of research about what is it that we want for the families at the family center. And through that survey and that research, we developed professional development for families, workshops, events. And you're gonna see a, a mass amount of number. And we are really engaging our families. One of the most important parts of, of them coming into the family centers is creating a place where families feel comfortable, nurture, welcome, that we, that they have access to, um, someone to support them, invitation Creole or Spanish. And that there's a seamless, um, registration process. That they don't have to go, like the ML's families used to go to City Hall and other families used to go to schools. They needed to go to other places for different services. It's a centralized hub where they receive all the services. So if you look at, on your right-hand side on the page, those are all the services that we provide at the family center. Besides the workshops, the training for staff, for partnerships. And one of the things that came out of the survey is a list of needs that family had. And thanks to, to, um, Diane, I went blank, and our part, and different partnerships. One of the things that we noticed when families were coming in was the need for nutrition, for food, for clothing. And we recently, in November, opened a pantry and providing that service. And we have that data for that. One of the most important things that I think that, um, the community needs to realize is that, is that the interactions that we have at the family center, it's not just registration. It's not just, um, providing services. It's also, we're partnered with the city hub, community hub, where we do referrals to families. And there are an extension of what their needs are. If you look briefly at the data, we've had since, um, July to January, a total of two thousand one hundred and nineteen families visit. But that's not the only thing that we do. Those two thousand one hundred and nineteen is basically registrations. But if you look at the other data, we have partnerships, workshops that are happening at the family centers. We provide professional development, workshops for families. The numbers are high and you could see that. We now opened up the pantry, we have a hundred and fourteen families from the time that we opened it up in November that have access to, that are signed up and go. We have kids that are, come in and say, we're hungry, we just direct them to the pantry. So for me, I'm very passionate about the family center because I, it's rewarding. Like I'm getting paid for a rewarding experience because I see, um, the services how are reaching families directly and that they're very, um, supportive of the family center. We've done a survey and our survey is phenomenal for the, for numbers we, we have. If you look at, um, we had a response of a hundred and ninety-one families who scored us, um, their family center experience. Exceptional. And most, um, surveys, we have a nine percent return, we have two thousand one hundred and nineteen families. But it's optional to, to complete the survey. Normally, um, in terms of research, we try to get between a five and a thirty percent response rate because not everybody wants to, um, do the survey. We have, we are at a nine percent right now. And our goal is by the end of the year to be at a twenty percent. But it's phenomenal, the results, we are exceptional. A hundred and seventy-four families have, uh, uh, the way, the service and what we provided for them there. In addition to that, um, we refer them to the social worker that's at the family center. We support them with, um, documentations. One of the surveys indicated that they needed services for notary. So we, we had someone certified at the family center. A pastor came in yesterday saying, "I heard you do notary, can I?" And they come in and we're providing that service. One of the things that our goal is, we're really trying to get a clinic at, at the family center. Because some of the families struggle with getting the vaccine and immunization. But we partner with, um, the Health Center, we partner with Fairfield University, who's supporting us with the mental health. Feeling the Black and Norwalk Mutual Aid is supporting us with the pantry. It's, it's an amazing place. If you look to the left of your packet, I'm trying to keep to my time. We, I shared all the workshops that we've provided through our, um, since August to the present time, it's over, uh, twenty-seven, three major events. And we, in the survey, from the survey response, we asked families, "What else do you want us to provide?" With some, some things that you need. And one of the things that they definitely, um, share was the fact that, um, they wanted the, the clinic, they want, um, ESL course in the family center because it's so centralized. We offered it in Norwalk High, but it's easier, easier for them to reach it there. So we have a tremendous feedback about the family center. And one of the things that the curriculum team is doing now, we're gonna start, um, rolling out weekly, um, family workshops around the district priorities, around the curriculum, informing them, uh, providing them with the knowledge that they need to make an educational, um, um, decision about the academics of the, the child.
I just wanna do a time check, choose time, but I think it's important for like more to have sometimes to ask questions. Thank you. So we have ten, ten minutes for questions.
You're pushing me, you're pushing me. Well, we saw two hands, so I think, right?
Sure. So we went through a lot. I mean, there's a lot happening in terms of curriculum professional development. SRBI, SEL, specialized learning, family center, there's a lot happening up until this point. Some things we are on track with our goals, some things are, we're still working towards or are delayed and, i.e. social studies. But what questions do you have that we can answer in any of the domains?
Well, I have a question about SRBIs.
Sure.
And how you're documenting now the, uh, co-teaching is kind of up and running? The effect of co-teaching on more identified kids in SRBIs? Is that happening or?
So-
More eyes looking at, uh, white need?
For SRBI, we are tracking, um, like matched cohorts of students. So we're looking at students, how they, number of students that were in SRBI because part of SRBI is really attract, we wanna make sure that they, students may need tier-two interventions or tier-three interventions. And if that's not working, then we are then, um, the team would then recommend the child to go to a PPT process. And the PPT would then have a meeting and they would make a, a deci, an informed decision.
Is that happening? Are you seeing more kids identified because more eyes are there?
We, we are-
One of the things for an SRBI, uh, SRBI student might be in a co-talk class, is, is that right?
They could be in a co-talk class, but not necessarily, like, because SRBI can either be an intervention and then you go back into tier one, or you can go to tier three, or you may need to then go through the PPT process. And so if that's the case, then a child may be identified. And what we are seeing is that we are able to identify students earlier who may need it. But we're also able to close gaps based on the data. Some children who may be in the twentieth percentile, but then through a tier-two intervention, make the growth and then they, they're out, and then they're out. Some students may need to go into a tier-three intervention, but then with that tier-three intervention, then they start to make the growth. And so it's really about checking the student, tracking the data, and then making informed decisions. That's why we go through cycles with SRBI. We're currently in our- We're currently in our third cycle and the teams come together. And if you are in the SRBI process, there's a team that will come together and have an instructional conversation about the student to make decisions.
Yeah, I mean, I, 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 I could see why half an hour is not enough. This is, uh,
I know, right?
This is very significant work. I mean, it's really just, um, cool to hear it all spelled out like that. And, you know, part of what I'm curious about, and I have the data right now where something I'm sure we're still looking through is, you know, a lot of the, uh, the, the progress we're doing, we're making in curriculum. And, um, you know, looking at revamping some of our, uh, reading and, and math skills and so on. Curious about the social studies, I wonder, I wonder if that's politicized in there, but anyway. You know, um, we're dealing with things now that in what I would call regular times were issues that we were dealing with at NPS and across the state. In the twilight of COVID, you know, where some of those things have been exacerbated or highlighted or, or, um, made worse. I want, you know, I'm curious to know, um, if some of those, uh, trainings and PD opportunities have been, uh, shaped specifically around what we call a learning loss, um, that we have experienced in COVID. And two, um, if we're seeing an effect on the professionals themselves who are also dealing with the, you know, the aftermath of a pretty traumatic time. That's data that we're capturing and, um, putting into a narrative in some way.
So, so I'm gonna like address parts of that question, right? So I think that, um, one of the things we've always tried to keep our sort of eye on, right, in the ball is thinking about what instructional changes are we going to make that are going to have the greatest impact? And so last year, when we sort of moved into really more kids being in school, we realized we needed to establish those smaller class experiences so that kids could, um, have more one-to-one, right? Um, at the same time, we're strengthening the core instruction i- in the larger class, if you will, right? So when we have the whole class versus like the parts of the class. And so I think that by doing that, we've been able to close some of the gap. But as I said last year, right, when we, uh, had our curriculum meeting, was any type of loss, right, or change really takes three to five years. And I know that that often sounds like, that's like big, right? But, but that's what it takes. And so we have to can, sort of continue on that trajectory and we're seeing it. We're seeing the return on our investment through the decline in, or sort of the, the decline in the kids below the fortieth percentile. And that's a really important, um, number. And so we are seeing that the small changes that we've made are having a big impact on kids' learning. And it's also beginning, and we're, so I collected just, just this week, samples of kids writing across the district. And I know what kids writing was like, uh, two, well, almost two years ago. And there has been growth in that. Now, how do you quantify like writing? You know, we can use a rubric and a like scale and do all that, but really the fact was that kids were writing. They were writing very little and now they're writing. And the, and then we're going to see them even get better at sort of like the actual structure of the writing. So that's one way, like, it's not like a scientifically based, you know, if it's below this or above that. But like, just writing wasn't happening in a way that it could across the district and now it is. Even with our, you know, with our inclusive of our specialized learning students, um, who receive those services, inclusive- Inclusive of our multilingual learners, they're not sort of kept at a distance from that. It's like you're going to write. Whether you're writing in your native language, whether you're drawing what you have to say. So so in those ways, we've addressed those gaps, I think. And then we're hitting the other things because of it. Uh, you know, we're hitting those SEL pieces that need to be addressed because we're giving kids access to a voice and and lots of choice. So we're also like in the units of study, we've adapted, like, there's lots of choice for kids. And for teachers to say, you know what, I'm gonna go this way with it instead of this way because this is what my class is interested in. And we're like, good, go, right? Like, the destination is what is important. How you get there for me, for us, isn't as important. Does that make sense?
I I also think our initial PD this year in August was really focused on research-based interventions. Like, we know that, yes, we want to accelerate our learning, but we also wanna make sure that we are able to use research-based programs. To help make the instructional decisions. And so that, we worked with our principals and that was really our, our first PD. Was focused on building that capacity across the the organization.
What's important is all these changes and everything you've implemented is creating a positive effect, right? You're not status quo, you're not going in a negative direction and it's.
Well, and we're, we're using data to make decisions, right? We're looking at SRBI through a data lens. And if it's, if we're seeing this positive growth, then what we're doing is having a positive effect. And if it wasn't, well, then we would need to adjust and change course. That's really important for us. Like, prior to us having SRBI. One of the things Dr. Estrera heard all the time was, the only way to get a child identified was through a parent request. This year alone, w- we've had twenty-six students that have gone through SRBI and have then been able to receive services. Some for mathematics, some for literacy, but we've had twenty-six that what did not go through a parent request went through our formal process. Which it's, we're able to use the data to support the work that's happening, which I think is really important.
Could I just go back to your interventions? Are you, are are those from regular teachers or?
It, so it's a combination.
And and then we have interventionalists?
We do.
How do?
So we have interventionists that run the wind time block. But we've also trained our gen ed core teachers in intervention so that we can have a broader range. Because we only have in many of our schools, one reading improvement teacher and one math improvement teacher.
And do we call those interventionalists?
They are, but we call them improvement teachers.
Okay, you're calling them improvement teachers, but somewhat else.
They are interventionists. That is correct. And so there, there's only one of each. They can't hit every kid in the school. So we, that's why we worked on the wind block and supporting all training teachers. So a one-fourth grade teacher might be using Spire and be, and working on a tier-two intervention where they're pulling a small group of six.
I guess she's telling us to move.
We can spend all day together.
I think we need, I think we need another meeting.
So, evening, everybody. So, I'll sort of, our, our goal really, um, is focused around. Our instructional programming, how we're helping to increase opportunities for all students. Making sure that they have ac- access to learning as well as other resources that they need. And, um, we, if you look at our goals, some of our metrics that we're looking at this year. Um, one was around STEAM learning. And we talked earlier about the idea of like integrating units of study for all of our teachers. And this is something. Yes, science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. And so what we've been doing this year is, um, the digital learning coaches. As well as the certified library and media specialists and some other coaches as well, have been working with the Connecticut Science Center. And we've been developing, uh, at different grade levels, units of study for, um, for our students. That integrate and augment the use of technology in the use in science. So that's actually what our focus has been. Um, you know, I've got an example here, if you guys want one. This is, uh, uh, where they're at at the moment. We'll talk about how we got there. Um, they, we started off the year with training all of our teachers, those coaches in next-generation science standards. What they look like in a classroom. We then took time to actually talk about how do you coach into this? So we did some training with the Connecticut Science Center and now the Connecticut Science Center is actually gonna be doing a push-in model. Which each, with each one of these cohorts of teachers that are now smaller cohorts. And this is an example of one of the instructional plans that's being developed that now the Connecticut Science Center is working on with our teachers. To be able to implement. So that's where, that's where we're at at the moment. But by the end of the year, the, the goal is to have actually, um, new integrated units and continually grow that. So we're not, we're not changing the whole curriculum in one year. We're just making sure that we're getting those opportunities and building on it.
So I'm clear, we're, the, what's being implemented is being developed with the Science Center and being implemented.
Yes.
It doesn't exist already.
So we have a science curriculum, but what we're doing now is we're taking our, how we teach science. And we're augmenting it with the use of technology and actually bringing it to a different level, which is also what we're doing with our coaches. This kind of gives an example of, uh, we'll talk about a little bit later. Um, we don't use this matrix per se with those teachers, but we use it with our Verizon teachers, but it's the same concept. Um, where we actually look at where do teachers stand and how are they actually implementing technology in their lessons? Are we seeing authentic use of technology and is it helping the learning that's going on in the classroom? And we help coach them through that, how to use it better. So that's really what our coaches are doing. So that's one of our, one of our projects around STEAM learning. It's moving along. Um, wanna talk a little bit about our future-ready programs. So if you're not familiar at all with the future ready program, I think we are, we keep talking about it. We have, um, three programs that work in conjunction with each other, two that opt into, which are the virtual and Twilight. But, um, a program that we, we, we haven't talked a lot about, but we actually have included in this because they receive services now from this. Is our expulsion program. And, uh, you know, some of the things we've been very, very proud of this year. Um, one of our metrics is that we wanna make sure that our students in virtual and Twilight are actually earning credits. And earning quality credits, and we're actually seeing that right now. An example of what they've been doing that we've been really proud of is, um, this is, uh, it's been redacted. But it's a, uh, it's a portfolio, it's a midterm portfolio from one of our students in our future-ready programs. So what we're doing, instead of just having standardized midterms, they actually develop a portfolio. That focuses on specific standards in each one of their classes and they have to show evidence of how they learn that. So, once again, it's, it's, uh, it's more, it's leading them towards their capstone requirements. It's actually looking at truly authentic learning. Students, students are thriving in this and they have to present it. So they're learning their portrait of a graduate skills, which is something we'll talk about in a moment too as well. Which are communication, collaboration, critical thinking. And we're starting to tag those pieces of learning with our students. So we've been really, really excited about this. Some highlights, if you're not familiar with the virtual program in Twilight. Um, we've got students that have had medical issues, that have been homebound, that are enrolling. We, uh, the enrollment is growing, you know, we s- we started with only thirty students total at the beginning of the year. We're now at sixty, I think as of the other day, um, it's sixty-six and that number continues to grow. Um, we've, uh, we've had teachers that actually can actually work together now around cross-curricular planning. So that if they're teaching a social studies lesson, these teachers have time to be able to work with each other and collaborate with the math teacher. And looking at how they get those cohorts to work on something like this portfolio, which actually is truly cross-disciplinary as well. Um, students can be enrolled in either virtual.
What data are teachers referencing during cross-curricular planning for the curriculum? So like, am I looking at NWEA results, uh, uh, to like help plan for cross-curricular? Or am I looking at areas that, you know, we haven't touched on?
So they're, they're, they're looking at content and standards. And then so, but then there's actually the assessments that they're using, traditional NWA and so forth, to see where students are. But they, uh, we are really looking at competency-based learning too as well, instead of just see time, you know? Do the kids actually understand the material? And I think that's really something that we're seeing. But once again, just a couple of highlights there. You can have students enrolled in virtual or Twilight. Or, in some cases, we have students that are enrolled both in virtual and Twilight and they've been working together, so.
Does that also mean they're pulling dual credits?
Well, they're, they maybe, they, they could be. But, um, right now, for the most part, like, let's say you're taking, there may be a student that's taking science as a virtual student. You know, is working or is taking care of their child. And then comes in for a couple of hours for Twilight. They're not coming for the full Twilight program, but we're able to customize back and forth and we share staff. The nice thing about is we also.
In those pro.
In those programs. And, but this is where the difference is, with NEAP, with our expulsion program. We've been able to use our social worker and guidance counselor to be able to kind of push in, as well as these teachers to tutor at the NEAP program. So as they're working on their work, they're getting those additional supports. We've, uh, we've been lucky to have things like our workforce development person come in, Carol. Uh, who got a little bit later to work with our students. They've had community service opportunities that students have been working on. So, uh, you know, we've had a couple of toy drives where the kids have actually been part of and then really working within the community. So we're starting to actually see a little bit, we're trying to develop a restorative model. We're trying to, and we're trying to make sure that next is getting transitions back into a regular learning environment for some of our kids. So, uh, like I said, we've been really, really excited about that. One of the other things on the slide too, that's one of our goals, is we wanted to implement a digital citizenship program at a K level. So our library and media specialists, as well as our digital coaches, have been working on developing a, um, a digital citizenship curriculum. Um, it's a series of four to seven lessons per grade level. Um, they teach them in library, usually at the time that they're in, in library. Um, we also have research skills that's being taught and then we will be adding in over the next year, computer applications. So basically, you know, teaching a second grader how to copy and paste, the skills that they would need to be able to do. The, the bare bones, minimum things, but this will make a big difference when they're testing, when they're doing, you know, when they're trying to do other things. Because everything is computer-based at this point. So, so that's moving forward. If you'd like to see one, one piece of evidence, we can show you the curriculum and then share some data on the pre-imposed test on how kids are doing on that. So with, with throughout the district. And then finally, one of the other things we're also doing with this is we're trying to make sure, oh, here it is, Nick. I just found it. So, I think we just, we just shortened up a piece of one of, one of my slides to make it a little nicer looking. Um, so we're actually also implementing what we call a portrait of a graduate. And there's certain skills that workforce developer looks for, communication, critical thinking, creativity. Uh, these are really what employers look for. We've actually started developing what that looks like. And trying to look at these, these portfolios and tagging them. So are we seeing that students are being creative and so forth from our descriptions? So it's a work in progress, but it's something that we wanna move forward that makes sure that we educate the whole child. Not just look at the academics, but making sure that they're really prepared to be able to go into the workforce. Because we know that that's really what employers are looking for. And how do we, how do we start assessing them? And we've got kids self, you, once you see these portfolios, they're self-reflecting on those skills too. So we're really excited. This is actually something we're doing in conjunction with them building their capstone projects.
High school.
High school, yes. Yeah, yeah, at the moment. Um, we also, uh, one of our, one of our goals, uh, as well as what was notated, yeah.
Uh, graduate is the plan to tier down the application of. Kind of this portrait of a graduate and how we start putting in measure, like to tier it down to middle elementary? Or is it just kind of, uh, become realized in high school and more?
It's the holistic approach that we're thinking about, like, so the end is like backwards planning. Here's the ultimate student ready to enter college and careers. So what does that look like to get, what's, what's the path or trajectory to get them there? And what are the things we have to have in place so they can, you know, incrementally get to that space?
Yeah, but we do have to start somewhere. We know that those, those older students are the ones that need it immediately. So we're backwards planning in a sense.
So where are you in the, like, if you had to say what grade level are you at, like, obviously high school, but are you?
So we're developing this.
Yes, definitely. And the tagging of it's really only in the future-ready program at the moment. Because it's such a small cohort, we're able to kind of see how do we build a tool that actually will help us do that. Yeah, not that those skills are not being taught in other places. Trying to look at, how do you actually measure them? It's, 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 yeah. So, so that's a lot of the work this year. One of the other things too that we talked about from an operational standpoint is building a strategic plan. This was notated as one of the, um, recommendations in the efficiency study that we did with the city.
A strategic plan for like the phasing of this?
For, for, no, for digital learning in general and technology. So it actually, in that plan, it includes, um, a section on technology infrastructure, data, coaching and library and media services. And the, um, plan itself is organized. Here's a draft of where we're at right now with this. Um, and it really is a draft. There's a lot of holes in it, so, but you can just kind of see.
Draft of the plan.
That's a draft of the plan, yes. Um, it, it's broken up into understanding what our current state is. What are going to be our goals over the next couple of years, a gap analysis of what we're, what we're missing and how are we gonna get there? And then finally, metrics to be able to do that. So, um, we've been planning that out on our infrastructure side, on a variety of different areas. Um, I mean, the infrastructure is one of those areas. And then finally, yes, we do also, I didn't list it up there. But we are developing, uh, what the budget actually looks like. So what does the money look like that we're spending on this in comparison? So, um, and it's not your traditional budget, it's, it's lumping in all the money we spend on technology. So that's why when you see those numbers, we're still trying to gather that stuff in a way that makes sense. Um, companies like Gartner actually do this type of work. So that's really, if you, if you wanna think of it, this is almost basically like looking at a Gartner audit. It for us and how do we kind of move things forward and build out a plan. And, uh, if you're not familiar with the Verizon schools, which I'm sure you guys all are. We, uh, we're continuing to do our work. We actually have our innovation labs that are now complete. They, uh, they completed them over the winter break. Um, so they're in place. We've got our ribbon cutting, official ribbon cutting next Monday. Um, so we're, we're excited about that. Teachers will be starting to be trained in the use of the labs. And, and the curriculum will kick in as of September. But, um, but it really is exciting to kind of see these spaces. And if you get a chance, even if you can't come to the ribbon cutting, just let us know when you'd wanna come in and see what's going on.
Where are they again? Which campuses?
At West Rocks, Nathan Hill and Ponus.
And they're beautiful.
Yeah, I was in there playing with the VR glasses the other day. It was fun. Yeah, and but it's, but it's also very enlightening in how we're going to be able to use the work, um, in conjunction with Arizona State University.
You have a good memory.
Yes, I do. But, um, but yeah, so ASU has actually been meeting now with the technology department, trying to build out the servers, trying to do everything else that needs to happen. And, but they'll be doing the training with the teachers over the spring and then the curriculum actually kicks in in September.
Where does their financial support stop for like maintaining the lab, uh, like it's, it's on Verizon, I meant.
Yeah, it's kind of, so it's, it's kind of like, it's already trickling off now. Um, so really, we're gonna be responsible from now on for the laptops. They're still paying for all the 5G portion of the, um, of those pieces. They're, they're actually, they paid for a portion of our coaches, which they're not doing anymore. That means only the first two years of a phase in. And, um, there's other types of supports that they give us, but the monetary support, um, will be dropping down. But the, but the innova- the, the, the other end of that though is, we seem to get more opportunities because we are a Verizon school. Like, these innovation labs wouldn't have been even an opportunity for us. And each one of them, I mean, I, I, um, they, there are hundreds of thousands of dollars to build each one of these labs. Of the amount of money that they were spent to be able to kind of put them into place. I know Verizon does not want us to kind of put a, a number on that. But they, I mean, when you really look at the equipment and look at everything else that they did in the, cause they paid for all of the construction of the lab as well too. Um, I think the only thing we had to pay for was asbestos baby, basically.
And typically, they, I don't know if you mentioned this, they only do one per district.
One school, one school.
No, one school per district. And we got three. Which is unheard of.
Yeah, and that was because of the way in which the, um.
We formed the partnership with them. They were very happy with the way we have interfaced.
That's great. I have a question. In those labs, is there Verizon branding?
Yes, there is.
Getting their early customers.
So I'll be sharing, uh, specifically around the equity and inclusion and excellence structures and professional development. As well as all of the departments that fall underneath my sphere of portfolio. That include workforce development, research and analytics, uh, communications as well. So the goal specifically, I should have developed specific concrete structures and one of the ones that we began this year or last year was the grading for equity committee.
We know all about that.
Oh, do you now?
Well, we appreciate you.
So we had, uh, as you may, as you know, quite a variety, actually all stakeholders involved in a book study to identify specific gaps in grading and create recommendations to submit to the policy committee for consideration, which, um, we are looking to have happen this time, sometime this year, which is pretty exciting. Dr. Stray and I visit every individual school to meet with the leaders to specifically, uh, have conversations around how they are providing supports to MLLs, SWDs, boys of color, remediable teachers, and either individual students to kind of assess their, um, their viewpoint about the quality of instruction. We're looking at planning to see how teachers are thinking about providing specific supports and targeted supports with scaffolds for a variety of learners, how they are using data to drive the planning, as well as be able to identify where the gaps are for students as well as the growth over time. So we visit every school at least twice. Um, after those visits, we debrief for the principals, provide them flows and rows and specific concrete next steps that speaks specifically to those targeted groups, um, from our conversations and give them the feedback from student groups, specifically the high schools, more so than elementary and middle, uh, around their experience, whether it be them having access to counselors, whether it be, um, how they are, how their, uh, instructions in math. Uh, so all of those are pretty critical for us to be able to have a, uh, ear to the ground as to what we need to do at the district level to, to ensure that all students have access. Um, next we have my brothers and sisters keeper, which is a rights and passage program, um, designed to specify, to provide specific SEL support, that's most academic support. Uh, we currently have about a hundred to a hundred and twenty each of the groups and we are engaging in our very first cycle of, um, surveys for our scholars, uh, specifically to kind of gauge the impact of the programs. The next phase will be around the academic component where we're going to be looking at their, uh, end of the, end of the semester grades and assessment data as a baseline and have a conversation with them around goal setting to see if we're able to support them in transitioning or moving their academic progress. Uh, and I think that's pretty exciting to have that, that, that level of data to be able to speak to impact. Um, and people say, why did you start already? Well, because in fact you have to kind of form relationships with the students first. And so this is the early inception of both of them. Um, so that we're excited about that. Uh, we are kicking off our affinity groups for our LGBTQIA plus group, uh, starting Visma, our black and Hispanic and feminist groups will be happening this year as well. They will all be student led with an advisor. Um, luckily we, we, we had to continue to work with, uh, Jim Martinez, uh, and Jim Martinez has specific groups who are willing and all at school based and outside organizations who are really excited about providing her support as facilit- um, excuse me, as, um, what's, what's we're looking for? Sponsors, not facilitators, students will be, be student led. And we're excited about the fact that we've actually initiated our very first district wide community events. We get our first one Hispanic heritage, uh, we're going to have our black history, we're going to have our women history in March and LGBTQIA plus in June with the idea of bringing community to create the inclusivity that we want to, uh, su- support this idea of acceptance, love and appreciation for all diverse groups. Next, professional learning, um, we have, we are utilizing, so pre, last year we engaged in conversations and support from the Equity Institute around, um, identity, racism and some of the feedback was around what are we doing about implicit bias? So this year's professional development has solely been about implicit bias. As you can see, one of the topics has been mitigating bias through an intersectional lens and supporting teachers with facilitating conversation with their peers, um, uh, belief surveys, uh, student and teacher relationships around identifying those, those areas so that we can create a more inclusive culture at the school level. So we currently have about, again, a hundred, uh, staff members throughout the district who are our equity ambassadors, who are the carriers of the trainings, who should be turnkeying the work to their staff. I know I'm going tomorrow to meet, uh, to Ponus because they're going to be going over their professional development agenda during a run through, um, that they're going to present at their staff meeting on the Monday after. So pretty excited about that. The second area for professional development specifically deals with instruction. So last year we realized a lot of our teachers and staff members didn't know how to unpack standards. What that means is do you really know what teaching to that standard act, what means? So just because you have a standard about theme or, uh, fractions, do you know what it, what reaching the standard looks like and how you support students getting there? And so that was the first component, but even inside of that, we realized that oftentimes our teachers didn't incorporate specific strategies to meet a diverse group of students. So, um, Unbound Ed did that level of work for us last year and this year is the extension of the work to a new philosophy that we are adopting as a district, just called Glean. We want to make sure that instruction is grade level, it's engaging, it's affirming and it's meaningful. So currently we have a pilot of about thirty-five coaches, teachers who are, um, who are being supported in this work of how to plan purposefully with those specific areas in mind as models to create lab sites at schools, uh, where others, teachers can lab sites.
Lab sites, mm-hmm.
So the, they should be the experts. So if, if you need some support with how to plan purposefully or engage students or teach grade level content, come to my class because I am the person.
I'd be inviting my colleagues across the district or in the school?
It could be across schools, it could be across districts because the coaches who also meet monthly, they are sharing best practices and say, hey, you know, at my, at my school, you know, Cavern's doing an amazing job with so and so. And to create intervisitation across the district to really kind of spread that level of learning. So, um, they're actually going to be coming for a whole week, the company Unbound Ed, to do a, uh, almost like a walkthrough and they're doing a full study, they're going to give us the feedback. You'll have a report in June from where we, where we are currently as a release of the goal, because we communicated our goal this year, is really making sure that we're supporting planning for diverse learners. And so they want to see, you know, how they've been, how we've been implementing these strategies and doing just that.
The schools are choosing to walk through, is it ones that, is it part of the cohort that's trying it out or is it just a random?
So the cohort is everybody. So every school may have, well, some, some schools may have two, may, one may have one. Um, there are four schools that are going to be visiting and they've been identified by Sandy and, uh, Mary Ann based upon date because, you know, some people are away. But there's going to be one high school, one middle school and one elementary, uh, as part, and sometimes maybe two of each, of one of them.
And I ask because do you mind for the culture, you know, it's different, uh, more intense, different buildings and the feedback from them, you know, in terms of how we'll hear it, you know, is it for all high schools or just one high school or just, you know, starting to think about, is it for all, you know, in terms of how we're taking it?
Right.
Uh, and, uh, in the absence of any like level setting, you know, it's our first stab at it, you know, just in terms of keeping it rich and making, I don't know how we will take it moving forward.
I, I, I think the, our, uh, one of the conversation that we all had was that we wanted to be, um, we didn't want to cherry pick and say, we want you to go to this school that we think, uh, may give the best representation. We want a, a, a full spec, we may, we may go to one school. Yeah. So it's going to help us in any way. So we want to, to send them wherever so we can get the best, most impactful feedback. And then lastly, we know the equity teams, these are all the goals for the equity teams, you can't really see it, um, and that they're working with, for the specific steps. Give me a clicker, Rob. Uh, give me a click.
So Glean is something we want to adopt. We, we really haven't identified the observables for what it looks like when we're pulling it in.
So they provided us what it should look like in practice across-
Even on TV.
In schools, um, and what are specific strategies and tools that individuals can utilize to make sure that it's grade level. For example, in order for it to be grade level, you know, teachers need to understand the, the complexity of a standard, um, and how it even escalates from the fourth grade, fifth grade, the same standard, you know, how it changes the complexity from each grade level. That's unpacking the standard and knowing what instruction to that looks like. So that's the philosophy we haven't adopted here yet, but it's good practice everywhere because you want to teach the standard. Another one is affirming, this is a new one. So how do we make sure that in our curriculum, everyone feels that they are a part of it so that they see themselves, whether you are a young girl, whether you are a transgender child, whether you are a boy of color, whatever, um, how do we make sure that everyone feels that they are a part of their, this story that we're talking about in terms of education? So we're not there, um, but the goal is to, you know, get us there. So we haven't adopted it, no, but that's why we're engaging in the learning to see how we could adopt practices and pieces over time. Next we have the workforce development led by Carol Wilshatoff, who's on my team. And so one of her goals is specifically to increase the, at the expansion of our career pathways and currently she's already done an amazing job of outreach. She's had twenty-one meetings with various sponsors, uh, to develop, uh, these career pathways. One of these we're really excited about is the ten students that we currently have placed in an apprenticeship, uh, specifically in education, because we're building our education pipeline, um, looking to expand that le- next year. She developed a kindergarten developmental guidance lessons, almost a curriculum specifically that's been implemented in September, which was unheard of and brand new. Um, we're going to have our very first workforce development career fair in partnership with a variety of vendors to offer opportunities, jobs, apprenticeships and on the spot hiring for our scholars, which is also pretty exciting.
Current students and graduates?
Yes. Um, and just the fact that, that she developed this website with a plethora of information resources that she's driven people to, um, that has a significant amount of this attraction because of all of the richness of information being provided through this office. So we are pretty excited about the work that's happening about workforce development piece.
And is this, you know, what she, what Carol is doing is only available to Morawak students?
Yes.
So how, how is that being managed, like, do you know, like, because that's thirty, you know, that increase in traffic, like, is it coming from outside the district too? Do we know?
I, I don't think we have, we have that information about where, who, where people are coming from.
No, I, I think it's also that, um, it's, it's the fact that our students are hitting it that much because there wasn't, there wasn't a lot of traffic.
Yeah.
But we don't know for sure if it's not other kids from other districts.
Maybe, it's possible because again, it's, it's public information, so people are-
Right.
But the, the opportunities are specifically being provided through our scholars.
And we can track, we can go into our network and see if it's our kids or somebody else.
Yeah, we should be able to see like some, at least some basic metrics around that.
Because I would just think we would want our kids to have the priorities when it comes to these opportunities.
You have to be.
Well, they, even if someone else is looking at it, it's only available, it's only available to our students, yes.
Only to our students.
Yes.
And so as you all know, prior to my coming, Eddie Fergus engaged in some work around disproportionality that really sparked this focus around data being utilized to make informed decisions, to kind of close the achievement gaps, to eliminate some of the inequities that have been existed. And so now we've extended it, extended it to creating a data-driven culture, knowing that they have a variety of different learners, uh, that, uh, that information is pivotal in being able to know how to support them accurately. So whereas before teachers and schools didn't engage in data conversations or identifying what supports, uh, need, are needed for Godfrey or Ralph or Thomas, now we have a variety of tools that stu- that teachers have access information, principals at their fingertips that should impact how they are thinking about supporting students as well as drive practices to support a variety of learners. And so we are building our first common, our common assessments, so we're able to see as a holistic district, like how are all third graders performing, how are all boys of color performing, what, what are chronic absenteeism look like across the district, how many suspensions are happening, who's performing well on our venture, venture intern exams? So we have a, a storehouse of information. Now the work is how do we get people to actually effectively utilize it? And so currently we have about, um, and so this has led to my director of school approval, Ms. Christian Smith. And so we have this platform called Otis that literally all of our interim assessment data's end of the unit assessments are being graded and stored on this website, on this platform. And then their teacher teams are using the data to say, oh, my third grade class took an assessment last week and only twenty-five percent of them mastered this specific standard. So now we have to go back and reteach, I have to do small group instruction because these five scored this here, these, uh, these students excel, so they need something different for them. And that's the way it's intended to work. Um, we've had more than ninety training sessions, uh, on this new platform from Kristin. She's done whole group sessions, she's did one-on-ones, teacher teams, IOTs to provide, to build people's capacity as to how to utilize the actual platform. Um, we also work with Rise, as you know, current, uh, for our on-track data for our high schools. And each school has a data lead now, which is something new. They have one person who should be the data expert at the building, who should know how to access the information, who should be supporting the leading team meetings, data meetings, who should be the ear of the principal so that they are aware of where the students stand at all times, whether it be NWEA data, whether it be interim assessment data, all of those, and they are being trained by Kristin from my team.
And, uh, you know, in terms of leveraging Power School and Otis, is the lead in each building supposed to be the, the, the go-to for that as well for those systems?
They should be. And so that, I know they've had four trainings so far, data leads on Otis, but the, the second piece is we are also, even, even though one of my, one of our slides got eliminated, um, we have a partnership with Harvard for strategic, strategic data project. And so, uh, we have a member of our team who is building a comprehensive, I like to say the one-stop shop, Walmart, um, of all data storehouses. So currently we have data everywhere, we got NWEA data over here, we got attendance data over here, you got Power School data over here, you got grades over here. And so this-
School classroom.
Platform will have everything in one space that should be accessible to all stakeholders. So parents can access their child solely, uh, their, their, their child's portfolio from now till whenever. So they, we're just starting in fourth grade, they should have their fourth, sixth, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, all the way to twelfth grade. Um, and so that's going to be taking place in the next two years, the development of this platform. And we know it's going to look different per group. So the information that the district sees is going to be different than a student and the parent, but you will have access to a plethora of data sets for students, which is pretty, uh, pretty revolutionary.
Yeah.
Because it hasn't been before.
And, you know, in, in terms of access to the data that is driving actions, we take NWEA assessment, how soon after the assessment is it ready and reviewed?
Currently, right now, well, um, so what schools get the NWEA data, most of them should be within the first week or two, having those conversations in their teacher team meetings.
Broken down?
It's already broken down.
Because it goes into a system that does annuals, yes.
It's already broken down, now what conversations look like from school to school look different. So Dr. Stray and I went to, um, Concord, for example, and they had just gotten the NWEA. So we have, they had all grade level teachers leads, uh, looking at patterns and trends that they saw, identifying highlights, uh, from their specific school or students and then thinking about, all right, so why do we think that they scored this on this particular question? Oh, because we haven't gone, we haven't gotten a job for geometry yet.
Right.
And so those are conversations that are happening as a result of the data, uh, conversations that are happening. So these, I mean, these are just the, the ones about, you know, Diane providing support to principals around the data she shared with you all, uh, around, that's that one, next, all the same. These are all the tests that we take in throughout the district, which she communicates to you as well, um, multiple times throughout this year. And that's-
Yeah.
They're just, okay.
Definitely, I think-
And communication is also-
Communication is one thing that, yeah.
So, um, we started last time, so let's start.
Sure, sure, yeah, definitely. So, um, so, uh, Nick and Emily, our, our communication team under Dr. McBride have been really working a number of different metrics of cleaning up how we do communications. They've been looking at our, our social media presence, they've also been looking at our website. And as you can see here, um, from the work that they've done, here are some examples of like the increase in posts and, um, people actually being driven to our media and actually looking at the media that's available. So really positive, uh, you know, really positive data here on things, how they're moving forward. One of the other things that I think has, um, been really, uh, you know, Nick, Nick, just, there's a lot of credit for this, he's, he's moving forward with a whole new- He's moving forward with a whole new website. And so, we've contracted with a company called Final Site as a host, but building out really much more of a streamlined, modern...
Easily accessible, to navigate mobile-friendly. So, that's, I mean, I think just the data itself at the bottom, you can see the comparison between twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-two, twenty-three. There's an increase of a hundred and one percent of posts, a hundred and eleven percent of views, twenty-three percent of likes, a hundred and twenty-seven percent of shares, a hundred and twenty-nine percent increase in clicks. And that's just between the time he's come on till now. And so, we have a variety of new initiatives, whether it be these schools have their own individual videos being posted, chronicling the various events that are happening, the young men and young women being memorialized and posted in various spaces. So, we are significantly increasing the visibility of the positive things that are happening within the district.
The content for what's going on the new site, what is driving how that decision is made? Is it like, I'm gonna provide more of what people are accessing? Or am I gonna provide something that I don't see? Am I coupling it with the feedback from the communications audit?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
The, what drives a decision of content that will be placed on the changed website?
On the changed, well, I mean, like anything else that Dr. McBride and Ralph has said before, it has to be starting with analytics. So, we measured the top six sections that has been, you know, frequently visited on our site. And we want to make sure that that is front and center. And this idea of, you know, get to what we're looking for in two clicks as much as possible is really is sort of how we are looking at on how to design the site. So, that it's, you know, first of all, it's appropriate to what we're trying to do. And it's addressing sort of the need based on analytics. And also, you know, and then layer on top of the design itself is mobile-friendly, not just website that can, that adjusts on the side, but really specifically programming it for mobile. And then, and then the decisions on those things on the content side is really is about the programs that's happening, timely events that we're having, and then addressing, you know, initiatives like the budget and middle school choice. We want to make sure that we're ahead of that curve and really anticipating a lot of these things as we move along as well.
I think also the word is streamlined. Because some of the feedback that we've had is that it's, that what we have on the website is very valuable for the most part. Like, the components are what most people would have, but they're cumbersome, they're overwhelming and outdated.
So, is there a plan to use the site more for current events and information?
And we really want to do it as front and center. And really is about, and then, you know, what we're really pushing to is more Google Analytics to really measure how long are you spending on these things, you know, on each page? And really, the length of the content that is appropriate to, you know, sort of the attention that we're getting. It's not like we're cutting down, but they'll be essentially a read more if they really want more of the, you know, to dive deeper.
How much of it is tailored for youth? You know, when I think of the number of kids who are translating for their parents, the number of kids who are, you know, driving where they choose to go and being mindful of who serves the website. The majority of people here in the district, like, how much of it, if any, is for kids? Like, if I need to know where, outside of my school building, I can go to get my laptop? Like, is that I call the principal, or, like, in terms of things like that, you know, because...
So, there's definitely a sort of delineation of what the district side would cover and also sort of the school-based content as far as that's concerned. So, I think there's, on the district side, from what we've seen up to this point, a good portion of sort of the traffic is, you know, more on the parent's side of what they're looking for. At least, it's the bus schedule, the, you know, at least it informs us that it might be sort of parents as far as all the top sections that are being visited.
So, one of the things, for example, my sister's in Hampton, and, you know, I...
In Virginia?
She's graduated. And so, it's just, when you go to the website and you look at the variety of spaces that are on there, there isn't, like, there's a student site, there's a student-tailored section, you click on students, and everything that are student-related. And so, those would be considerations, you think about, like, so what are the things specifically, as one of the things that you can click on to get access for information and specifically target towards students?
But I also think you've done a really good job of actually targeting push-out with social media and so forth to kind of bring in adults, bring in students to be able to start viewing what events are going on and using the tools that they can actually see that too as well. So, it's a little mixture of both.
When is the new site supposed to go live?
So, by the end of the school year.
Are you doing any, like, usability testing? Or the group you're working with, are they putting it into focus groups or anything like that?
Well, a lot of the philosophy that they're put in, you know, because they specialize in school districts. So, they're bringing in, you know, sort of a huge amount of experience already on the sort of accessibility and sort of best practice, et cetera, too. So, you know, I think we're planning to put out some surveys also to make sure that we cover that side.
Yeah, to the community.
Yeah, some school systems that actually host with Final Site or Greenwich Public Schools. I think there, yeah, there's a number of districts in Fayette County, actually, that do. But they are nationally, they are nationally known as like one of the leading website hosting companies for K-12 education now.
That'll be huge.
Yep. We're getting that.
Alright, are we...
Thank you so much.
We will begin with Goal Two. And Goal Two is a facilities-focused goal. One of the goals is actually that we, that we develop a building-specific action plan. But I did just want to highlight that we have spent over three-point-three-five million dollars just this summer on improving some of our facilities. So, a lot of the repairs and the disrepair that our buildings were in, we have been trying to just chip away with that. There's a very comprehensive workbook that actually has it by school. It's too big for me to actually upload it, it lives in the cloud. But these are some of those projects that have taken place this summer, and we have been very proud of the work that we've been able to actually do. We've had two staff trainings that were conducted. Those staff trainings were ahead of the school year, and then one recently. We have gone over some of our mid-year assessments with them. The mid-year assessment was from last year, we just conducted the visit again this year. I don't have those results, but as soon as I do, I will. ISSA is actually a national company that comes in and does an assessment of all our facilities. And it's for visual maintenance and also for sanitation. So, they actually swab things and take it to a lab and tell us how clean things are. And they give us a report back. And we get a score as the district, and we also get a score per school. So, it allows us some very comprehensive, actually, data to actually be able to put into a plan for each school.
So, let me ask you a question.
Yeah.
Are these all city-funded things?
No.
Because this is all our money, right?
This is all our money.
Okay, because I know they do some of the...
This is all our money.
So, even the mid-year assessment, we're paying for that, right?
Yes, we are. I budgeted for every year, because it's important for me to have an outside company come in and give us an objective assessment.
Right, okay.
And it's a national, it's a national company, so we're actually being compared to schools nationally. What we also have been able to do as a result of the efficiency study is have a better division of labor between ourselves and the city. So, the efficiency study had highlighted for us where there were some redundancies in the works that we were performing versus the city. And then, there were just some things that didn't make sense, there were setbacks and rules around the parameter of facilities that really just were antiquated, and no one had really looked at it. But since then, we've actually sat down with DPW and Parks and Rec, and we have actually outlined what work Parks and, it's actually Recreation and Park that's changed, but I'm so used to saying Parks and Rec. So, Recreation and Park actually sat down with our team, and we went over the maps of each campus to look at what it is that we're going to be doing in terms of the landscaping versus them, and some of the snow removal. I was telling Lunda that I don't have the projected savings for that, but I think this year, because there's been no snow, it would be an unfair assessment of what the savings have been. But we've been able to actually work with them also on a joint usage agreement that we hope to get finalized. So, just a lot of those agreements that had been suggested to us through the efficiency study, we've been really actually putting them into play. And it's been a great team, Vanessa is great, Robert Cyrus is great, Ken Hughes and Sandy and everybody, and we work very well together. The other thing that we have been able to do is actually, the efficiency study demonstrated that there were gaps in our maintenance and our preventative maintenance. But we've been actually able to contract subcontractors based on, so, for instance, mechanical work or building carpentry. So, we have a list of vendors, a lot of those are local vendors, they're vendors that the city also uses, and been able to actually have that be contracted to those areas and have the people that do it have a specialty in that area. So, rather than one huge company that would be subcontracting everything. Sometimes, we actually like to work with the local vendors, and there's a better relationship in that way. And we hope to actually see some of the savings. The other part is, there's been, there was a lot of excitement because we have a different reimbursement rate now. We were approved along with Stanford to have an eighty percent reimbursement rate for new school projects and renovated as new school projects. We've been working with the mayor's office alongside Senator Duff's office to come up with a twenty-five-year plan. We had all agreed on what the tier-one schools were, and that was based on the Newman-DLR study. We presented that to you some time ago. But we've actually been able to have a very comprehensive study conducted on the feasibility of those tier-one schools. And now, what is left is for the city to really design the financial plan that goes with it, and then the timeline. So, as you know, we're in the middle of three school projects. We're doing Cranberry right now. We are very well into the Norwalk High School project, and we're starting the Sono project. So, that timeline is critical because we also want to make sure that the city is able to invest in a way that doesn't impact our bond rating and different things. So, we're working with our city, and hopefully, we'll come up with a twenty-five-year plan and be able to share with you soon.
So, Goal Three is one that's shared between the HR department, finance, and then Sanders Business and Operations and Operations Team. So, one of the things that I'd like to do here is kind of go over the HR goals and the finance goals. And as I talk about these goals, I'll talk about some of the accomplishments towards those goals. One of the things that the superintendent did this year was to reorganize and restructure HR and finance to kind of be under one, to be one team. That has greatly improved our efficiencies and how we operate because there are a lot of synergies between the two departments. So, as far as, the first goal we have here is obviously reduce processing and transaction times to enhance staff experience. We have a system, and what we're talking about here is just the entire recruitment process from advertising a position, interviewing, hiring, onboarding, getting that person started, is using, leveraging the system that we have so that it is efficient, reducing those processing times. We used to have situations where, you know, a school would want to hire a teacher, they would go through the process of interviewing, forward that person, recommendation to hire to HR, and then it would linger in HR while they need that person in the classroom. Or that person would show up in the classroom, but they don't have email or things like that that require IT to be set up. So, one of the things that we've looked at is improving is those efficiencies between those. The other goal that we've set out to do this year is obviously within the HR department, to just have regular communication with stakeholders, our parents, our teachers, our staff members in terms of laws and legal updates, interpretation, making sure that especially the supervisors that supervise staff are current with laws, rules, regulation. If a staff member comes and they want to take FMLA, if a staff person comes and there's some sexual harassment issues or training that they need. But it's just to make sure that all of our supervisors have the tools and the knowledge. And so, through the work of Barbara Namaney, she's been able to really build up that program and to get people in place and trainings in place in-house and outside, outside the district, just to provide that level of training and support to our supervisors. Obviously, like many districts, we have been challenged with recruitment this past couple of years. So, one of the things that HR has been working on is to increase recruitment and to go out and to raise the new applicants by at least by ten percent. One of the things that we've been doing is looking at what our needs are. Obviously, special education is a high need, trying to get more bilingual teachers and bilingual staff people. And so, that is where we're going for recruitment. So, we go to associations where we think, we know there are going to be bilingual educators there. Going to schools that provide instructions or teachers that are equipped to provide special education. So, we've been targeting our recruitment efforts towards those specifics so that we can get those types of individuals within our workforce, and that's beginning to show some results over time. We're beginning to see that our workforce is diversifying. We are starting, if you compare this year and the number of vacancies this year, I think last week, we looked at, I think we only had like fourteen, fifteen certified vacancies, which is amazing, we've never been that low. But that is through all these intentional efforts that the department has been doing. And along the line of recruitment is also retaining, retention. So, one of the things that we're trying to do also is to reduce turnover by five percent over time. And the one way to do that is obviously understanding the reasons for turnover. Some of it is pay, some of it is family issues. But how can we, as an organization, support and retain our staff? What can we do to keep people here? What are some of the issues, challenges that they're facing? And how can we work to overcome those challenges so that we do keep these people here? We have this called meet-and-greet meetings with school staff, which is basically just an opportunity to hear the superintendent. And these two ladies are doing roundtables just to kind of get a better understanding of what are some of the challenges at the school level, and this is also helping out. And then, we redid our orientation, what we call the New Beginnings, for new administrators specifically, as people that are becoming supervisors for the first time. How can they be effective in their roles? How can they, you know, things to look out for when you're managing individuals. So, these are some of the goals that we've set out in HR, and we're well along the process of doing these. We have really improved some of these systems. And then, as far as finance, what we've set out to do this year is, one is to incorporate specialized learning into the student-based budget. As you know, right now, specialized learning sits with the curriculum team, and the budget sits with the curriculum team. And so, what we wanted to do is to make sure that the dollars follow the students. And when we look at a school budget, pick any school, we totally account for all the resources needed for that school, including special education. And so, this, actually, this past year, and the budget that we're in, we actually incorporated specialized learning into the student-based budget. So, now, we're accounting for those expenses at the school level. Another goal that we set out this year, working with our fabulous communications team, is to basically redo our budget book, to make it a way that's friendly, but also provides information that's meaningful, charts, trend information.
I think it does that, you're gonna change your book, your book is already good.
No, that is the book.
That is the book.
That is the book.
That's the award-winning book.
Yeah, that's the, no, that's the award-winning book. And so, we've done that, and the goal is to, you know, we can always improve it, right? So, we're getting feedback. Part of the process of getting that award, you get peer review, and there are things that you can still improve upon. So, we're always going to make that book even better. Also, you'll see our financial reports, I've also been modeling along those areas. And so, that's kind of our goal as well. And then, one of the things that we also noticed is that supporting our school leaders with their student-based budget is something that we had not been doing as well, and you were a school leader. So, you know, we hire these people in these roles because they're great school leaders, not because necessarily they're great finance folks. And so, one of the goals that we've done as a finance is to provide that designated support for our school leaders. And so, we actually promoted an individual within the team to just be that go-to person for school-based budget. So, he meets monthly with the principals and with the staff people that are responsible for paying bills to make sure that they understand their budget, that the budget is trending as it should. If there are any issues with the budgets, we know ahead of time, we do budget transfers and all of those things. But the goal of that is just to make sure that we feel like we're supporting the school leaders in that way. And then, finally, what we want to do this year is develop a resource allocation plan. What that does is just ensure that each... What that does is just ensure that each school is resourced equitably and proportionally with others. So for example, one school shouldn't have two nurses whereas one doesn't have any nurse and those types of things. So what we've begun to do is to look at our existing resources. What is the ratio for school? And then looking at those ratios consistent across all schools. In areas where it's not, we're adjusting that. And then when those particular resources are being requested at that school, we have an objective way of saying that, you know, I think based on the plan, you're adequately resourced. You don't need another X at this school, but perhaps you need another Y because based on what we're seeing at the other schools, this is probably an area where you're deficient and not here. And so the resource allocation plan that we started to develop this year, I think is going to be a really good tool for us to allow us to just have informed decisions in where we, where we allocate resources. Because obviously we know the resources are scarce. And so we want to be as effective in doing that and no drop of my sword.
So a nurse typically, do we, I know for a while we were sharing. Do we still, we have a nurse in every building?
We have a nurse in every building. We only share if, if there's a coverage issue.
Okay.
And, and sometimes there's, there's a coverage issue if the person called out that morning.
Yeah, right.
You know, then, then we do some switching up. We try to rotate the sharing so that it's not always the same person who is leaving their building to go cover another building. But yeah, but we do have a nurse in every building. We have a couple of vacancies, but those vacancies are covered by subs. I'm going to skip through some of Lunda's slides because he gave.
Stop there.
Oh, stop here.
The fabulous budget award. I just wanted to pause. I kind of went through it real quick last time. You can keep going.
Thank you.
You want to linger.
Yeah, just linger. Do you have anything else you want to comment on?
No.
While we're on this slide?
Look at these lovely kids.
Look at the, yeah, so that's our budget book. And one of the things we wanted to show was, this is Wolfville Elementary. You have the budget, the details of the school and just, you know, tell a story. And that's really what we wanted to do with the book this year.
We're all very impressed. So.
You're on camera.
But we are. So what, another goal that we had was really for us to be able to monitor and track our incident reporting. And we were actually able to expand our Power School, which is our current student information system, to actually be able to run reports. And those reports can tell you like how many students are caught vaping or how many students were, were using foul language and, and got a disciplinary incident because of that. So we were able actually to keep this all within Power School, which is positive because you don't want to keep introducing new tracking and monitoring systems to teachers. You want to fully utilize the system that you have. What we have been able to identify is that there are some data entry things that we have to now clean up. And I'm leaning on Sandy and Mary Ann to help me actually make sure that schools are providing clean data, actionable data when it happens. Another goal under school safety was for us to collaborate with Jim Martinez's department to provide some of the, the resources to schools where we did see high level of incidences happening. And so do some of that school culture building and partner with Mid Fairfield and other, and Sandy Hook Promise to deliver training not just for teachers, but also to provide support for students. And we have a calendar that we've been able to maintain. And you guys heard a lot about this in Margaret during the last presentation that they did with SEL as to how many resources are actually poured into the different schools. And those actually have been largely funded by grants. And we're in the middle of pursuing more grants to make sure that we can, that we're able to keep that going. Finally, another school safety goal that you guys heard about in the fall was our goal to increase school safety infrastructure. Last year, we had requested one point three million dollars in capital funds. We were given six hundred thousand dollars that allows us to actually complete phase one. So because of that, we had to actually have the work done over three different phases. We call it phases because we don't, this is, these are hopeful years. But so phase one is for five elementary schools to receive these door alarms and cameras for the high schools. And we do have the, the vendors already done. We are basically all ready to go. And we've started the process of actually requesting to draw down the money. We have to go before land use because with capital funding, you actually go before land use and ask permission to, to use the monies that were allocated. What we asked for this year was phase two for next year. And this is what we are hoping gets put back into the capital budget. And these are the door alarms for the remaining elementary schools, additional cameras for the middle schools and mutual link, which is a communication tool that allows us to have communication with our city and state emergency responders. So we want to be all, they already have it, we just want to join them. So that's, that's what we were requesting the money from the capital for this year. And then as you can see here, phase three would be a future ask. And this would be the remaining door alarms for all of the middle schools. And then the cameras for the elementary schools. So there's, there's some thinking as to why we would want door alarms at the elementary schools because we, we have students that, that could potentially flee. They do, they're runners. And then cameras for the older kids because we just want to keep an eye on them. And then the phase, as you go further, it flips where we're doing the cameras for the younger years and the door alarms for the older years. With that, I'm going to turn it over.
Okay.
To Sandy and Mary Ann.
Okay, thank you. So goal four, can you go to the next one?
Sure.
Yeah. So we, Mary Ann and I, our jobs are to really work to support the principals and the assistant principals in our district, to help to provide them with the, again, the training and the support to make them the best education leaders that they can be. And so that they can help their teachers in their schools to be able to support student achievement. And with an emphasis on the, what we call the subgroups, the students who have been underrepresented before. You know, in prior years, I think the, the district focused on students overall. And now that we have a growing subgroup population, especially Latino Hispanic population, it really reveals us to make sure that those students are, are achieving at the same level and the same rate as everybody else. And of course, students who are receiving specialized services and special education, they, they need to be learning in the same way that everybody else is as well, you know? So Mary, that's Mary Ann, that's what we do when we work with them. I'm not going to go over each one of these goals because they appear on the other pages. So I'll turn it over to Mary Ann.
Sure. So our first goal really focuses on our two instructional priorities. One, data-driven instruction and planning for diverse learners. And so, and last spring, we had schools look at their data to develop their school improvement plans with their teams where they really identify what is going to be our action plan and what are going to be your goals. They set five goals, math, ELA, teacher teams, supportive environment, and an equity disproportionality goal. And in fact, today, the principals meeting focused on principals looking at a variety of data sources to think about where are you on track to meeting your goals? Where are you not? And if you're not, what adjustments do you need to make to your action plan? What's working well, what's not working well? And so a lot of this work lives in the teacher team meetings. So our teachers, meet in teacher team meetings on a weekly basis. Elementary school is by grade. Secondary level is by department, you know, ninth grade math and so on. And this is where they really look at the curriculum-based assessments that our curriculum colleagues have really set us up to do great work with. Because in previous, previous years, there was an end-of-unit assessment, but we don't want to wait for the end of unit to know if things are working, if students are developing, understanding the standards. So we now have both baseline assessments and then also kind of check-in assessments throughout the unit that kind of gives, gives us the information we need to know where do we need to reteach, who might need an extra support for upcoming lesson. And so a lot of our professional learning at the district level and at the school level has been around these areas. And so you see, you know, the impact is we want to see resulting in improved outcomes. And so I'm happy to share that the NWA mid-year data that we just got back in the last week and a half or so, we are seeing those gains. And I think it's important to point out that the way we're looking at data has shifted this year as compared to last year's. So previous years, NWA really focuses on how many students are at or above the fiftieth percentile. But there's been linking studies that if we want to see how many students are being predicted to demonstrate proficiency on SPAC, we really need to focus on the sixty-first percentile. And so that's been driving our goal-setting with schools this year is focusing on the sixty-first percentile. And I'm happy to say in math, we've seen that number of students from last winter to this winter increase five percent. In EEL, in math, and then in reading, about a point and a half. And so we want to see more growth there, but we're happy to see the growth is happening. And, you know, when we think about our subgroups, we, if you remember from our data last year, we saw improvement, but it was, everybody was kind of improving at the same rate, which if the average student is improving and the MLL groups are all at the same rate, we're not going to close any of those achievement gaps. So what we really need to see is accelerated growth. And so we've set targets around MLLs exceeding their growth target by twenty percent or more. And I'm happy to share that about forty percent of our MLLs on reading and math demonstrated that accelerated growth and forty-five percent of our students with IEPs. So we're proud of the work that, you know, a lot of these systems and structures are still building and refining. But really, our school, you know, school leaders and our math and literacy coaches are really instrumental in this work because they're the ones who are usually facilitating the teacher and BNE with support from the building leaders. Two things that are not directly tied to instructional leadership that I think is important to point out is the superintendent, starting in July, launched our first central office retreat. And so this was everybody at central office coming together to both reflect on as a department team, how are you serving the schools? How are you serving the strategic plan? Are you on track to meeting your priorities? But also, there's a lot of, you've probably heard, a lot of cross-functional work that happens. So it gave us an opportunity to come together in those groups to reflect on how well are we working together and service of schools? And so we had the second one in November and we actually just had the third one last week. The other thing, Lunda mentioned the round tables. So we, we know it's important that we're hearing from our stakeholders to get feedback and inform our learning. So last year, we launched a principals advisory council and an assistant principals advisory council, and that has continued. But we also launched Monday afternoon round tables with teachers and paraeducators. And so we've had seven of those over the, during the fall. And this is where we have teachers and paras coming in, meeting with the superintendent, Dr. McBride, Rob, myself, Sandy. And, you know, my favorite anecdote from those experiences is the teacher said, I waited twenty-six years for somebody to ask me for, for my thoughts and for my feedback. And so, and what's great is like we met with them twice because we wanted to show that we acted on the feedback that you shared with us that first time and so that we could share that that second time. So.
So one of the things that is really important is for teacher growth is the feedback that the principals and assistant principals give to the teachers in order to result in their growth. As part of the evaluation system, they must go in to observe their practice. We are providing an awful lot of professional development between us and the curriculum department on providing the kinds of supports and scaffolds that I referred to before in order to help the students who are struggling to really access the curriculum at a rigorous grade level place. In order to find out whether or not those professional development opportunities are really kicking in and whether the teachers are using what they have been trained and whether or not they have been, they're being effective, you know, for the students that are, that we need to have them be effective for, the principals and assistant principals must go in and conduct these observations. When they go in, the, the, I guess the primary tool for helping the teachers to grow and to help the teachers really develop is the quality of the feedback they give. So when they go in and they see the teachers doing, you know, really practicing some of the things that they have been taught and really helping the students, they are able to tell them that they're on the right track. But if they have, are going into the classrooms and seeing that some of the things that need to be done aren't being implemented in the classroom, they're able to tell them that as well. We are very, it's very important that in the school where there is an assistant principal and a principal going into the same classes, that the feedback is aligned so that at least the teachers are getting the same message. If I go into a classroom and I observe a teacher and I provide feedback and I give suggestions for improvement, and then Mary Ann goes in the next week, it's important that she is checking to see whether or not the improvements that I suggested are being implemented, you know? And what we've done is help these schools implement these observation trackers. So not only do they tell each other when they're going in and they have a schedule for these observations, but they also list the feedback. They, they, they enter the feedback on these trackers so that if I'm going, if I've gone into a classroom day one and Mary Ann is going in day five, she can look at them to see what kinds of feedback I've given so that she can check to see whether or not the teacher is making improvements. And it's kind of a, you know, an, an all-hands-on-deck approach to really helping teachers. So that happens in all of our schools. We also have a system in the district for monitoring the completion of the observations. There is, excuse me, last year, some of the observations were not done in the most timely manner. And it's important to do that because the teachers need time to take the feedback and grow. So we can actually go into the systems. We can actually look to see what the quality of the feedback is, whether or not it's actionable, whether or not it's really designed to support teacher growth, excuse me, and whether or not it's happening at the proper, you know, time over the course of the school year. I think that, you know, basically we focused on the calibration between the assistant principals and the principals. And what we've done is during our monthly professional learning sessions, like the one that Mary Ann referenced today, as you know, we have been twice a month, once for the principals and once for the assistant principals. We've given them real opportunities to practice calibrating their feedback. And we are seeing great progress in terms of what the principals are doing and the assistant principals are doing. And we're seeing, of course, progress in the classrooms as a result.
Okay, so our after-schools undergo the school quality review. There's a team of folks that go and visit the school to kind of debrief the findings of the school quality review and to also look at the student data to identify a very, a very narrow focus of how we're going to help work with the school. And the cycle of support is all about us working collaboratively to build the school's capacity to engage in this work. And when I say engage in this work, I'm talking about improving the leadership practice, the teacher practice, and of course, ultimately, the student outcomes. And so you see here, this is kind of a gradual release because in the beginning, members of the team are working very closely with, hand-in-hand with school leaders. But again, we want to be building their capacity to be able to lead their, their work at their school. So by the end of the year, ninety percent of schools, that's our goal, will have engaged in the cycle of support. So we're currently at fifty-five percent. And of those eleven schools, six have gotten to the place where they are leading and driving their work. That doesn't mean that we're not there monitoring and that we're not reaching out with questions or more support. But we want them, you know, to be taking the driver's seat with us just kind of lifting up and monitoring through like a mid-cycle visit and an end-cycle visit. I think two things that we have instituted this year is just kind of really tightening up some of the data systems around how do we measure improvement to teacher practice? And then of course, our data snapshots on improvement to student data. One of the, the other thing that we've added is a student shadowing experience. So the quantitative data gives you, you know, a lot of information, but it doesn't give you all of the information. And so the student shadowing, if we're focused on MLLs, everybody on the team is actually going to shadow an MLL student for that day for a full lesson period where you put yourselves in the shoes of the student and really look at like what, how is this kid experiencing school? And it's an eye-opening experience for many when they see what the actual lived experience is for a child and why they might not be progressing in the manner that we would want to. And it really has resulted in often either a new sense of urgency or a renewed sense of urgency around, we need to make some big changes so that we are doing right by, by these students. And so I'm happy to share that more than seventy percent of the schools are showing that the grade or department team that we're focusing on is demonstrating much more growth than the other grades. So that tells us the cycle is working, but it also tells us that we need to help the schools to take the work to scale across. But it's like we start with kind of a pilot to build their, to their understanding of capacity and then help them with taking it to scale across the school.
And the last piece, forgive my voice, excuse me, but the last piece is very simple. When we have our principals' meetings and our assistant principals' meetings, we share the stage in a sense with some of our partners, including human resources. So they have a number of things that they need to professionally develop the administrators around. And what we do, rather than having separate meetings, And what we do, rather than having separate meetings, we invite them to join us and we provide time during the other kinds of professional development for human resources and other departments as well to, you know, share their professional learning with the administrators. And that was basically it.
Perfect. Yeah. Do you guys want to revisit any of the topics?
Or any questions that you missed?
Any questions?
Do you have any questions before?
No, I appreciate it. I mean, we're, I appreciate the whole evening, I wanted to say, because we're getting some valuable information. I think that, you know, it's great the way it's being brought to our, our focus. So I really appreciate the evening and the way that it's been set up in these small groups. It's been a very informative but interesting meeting as well. Keeps it nice and, you know. Yeah, I just feel like it's, it's been a very good format. I don't have as many questions. I know my miss over here has some questions for us, but I did want to say that I do appreciate also the way that you two are working off each other, the way that program goes and that you have that set up with, you know, going back into the checking the system. So that it's not just one person who's like going and seeing that and it's two people or, you know, another set of eyes that's seeing that as well. It seems really valuable to that, that whole process.
And frankly, now we're conducting, as part of the required evaluation process, we're conducting mid-year conferences with the teachers, with the principals. And Mary Ann and I doing it together, you know, so that we can speak to them both. We both can add some value, you know, to the conversation. And we both hear what's happening in the schools. So thank you, Julie.
You're welcome. I echo Janine's comments totally. What I was gonna say, so when you guys go out to the school, it really is to ensure that the execution of the program is happening and that it's happening properly, right?
Correct.
So, um, do you get any pushback from anybody?
Well, yes, you know, in some ways. We see, we, let's, let's, from my point of view, let Mary Ann.
And before you enter that, so what, I guess what I should ask too. So this is new for this district, right? We haven't had folks in the buildings to assess and to make sure that the curriculum was being executed properly, right?
There's always been supervision of principals. But the degree of supervision, you know, I think has increased this year. So I would want to say that. The other thing I want to say is that we are, and we, as a result of the, you know, the vision of the superintendent, we are working with our administrators to provide them with the latest research-based, you know, processes, procedures to really help kids, okay? And that is new. And many of our principals and administrators, and, you know, yeah, our administrators. It's, it's very new for them. And when things are new, they're not always easily implemented. So our job is to really support them. We do evaluate them, but our, but our, but our job is really, I believe, to support them. Because if we can support them, I look at them as my performance assessment. If they're successful, I've been successful. I'm sure Mary Ann feels exactly the same way. So if they can implement these new strategies that, and they're not new in many other places, but they're new to many of our administrators here in New York. And we want them to learn, we want them to be able to support their teachers to be able to deliver the highest quality, you know, instruction and education that will help our, that will help our students. So pushback, I'm not, nobody's actually said, no, I'm not going to do it. But what they do sometimes is not, people progress at different states, at different levels.
Well, why I say that, as you know, we've had people, some staff talk about, you know, lots of accountability, pressures, pressures, doing too much. And so I'm saying that because there seems to be a nexus there where perhaps maybe that's coming from more veteran staff who... Or, or not necessarily. I mean, it's just that it, it's just something that is intense and it's new.
That's right.
And so it may feel that way, even though it's all good work, it's all good.
I think, can I interject? Sure, I didn't. I, I think it depends in terms of who you speak to in the field and what they think. One of the things for me that was critical was that the people that were in central office were in the field.
Right.
That includes even our CFO. Our CFO has had one-on-one conversations with principals and staff members from facilities to funding to find better ways in which we could support them in managing our assets, which are the resources that we have to support children.
Right.
I think that, that that's one element that's very unique to, to our administration that was not happening.
Right.
At all of, of central office during school hours is expected, particularly those that are providing services to schools, to be in schools.
Right.
That includes myself as a superintendent and the deputy. We're, we're visiting schools, we're assessing practices, determining whether the implementation of the work is being implemented in the way that we envision. And also then to come back to the cabinet and talk about, these are some of the things that we noticed and these are some of the shifts that need to happen to, to strengthen the work forward. I think that's very different than what people have been accustomed to.
Oh, I know that.
So, so it's, it's a shift. I think, I think the other component in, in terms of accountability, because we are engaging in these cycles of improvement, there is always a circling back to seeing how practice is being implemented, which is not something that people might be accustomed to. And it's something that not only the principals are learning to adjust and, and change their frame of thinking around the work, but also the staff as well. I think you mentioned about our monthly meetings with teachers, paraeducators, principals, and assistant principals. During those conversations, we use those as opportunities to feed us information of what are the stressors in the field and what are the things that we need to modify to improve practice. And sometimes what, what you might be hearing is not necessarily what we hear in those conversations. Because when we engage in those conversations, we're focused on, on solution-based situations. A perfect example of that, at one of our sessions, one of the teachers expressed, there was a challenge when we're parent-teacher conference were being calendared because they wanted them to be aligned to the assessment calendar so that they can immediately have conversations with parents about that process. And we immediately made that adjustment because we felt that it was important feedback and it made, it made sense, right? So we're constantly using the feedback that we're getting from the field to improve our practice. What we don't, what we don't compromise is making shifts that are not good for children.
That's right.
Right? Because sometimes some of the feedback that we get are very adult-centered. And although we are focused in providing adults what they need, our, our, our work is making sure that we're in the service of children. Which is a conversation also that is very, that, that is different than what people have been accustomed to.
Right, because I think what may have been happening historically is that folks were getting the PD and learning how to do something. And then it was like, go in your building and do it. And there was really...
That was the feedback that I got coming.
There was minimal follow-up. It was like, you learn it, you do it how you want to do it.
That's not happening.
Right, right. So now it's a different model of how we're gonna get students to achieve.
And it ties back to, like, you expect us to come back with results. The only way that we can quantify results is by making sure that that cycle of, of, of support is, is being implemented and that we're progress monitoring the effectiveness of the work. I think the team can tell you that even as we were talking about, what we were presenting to the board, our constant conversation was, okay, so we have this program, we brought this research, what is, what was it meant for, what has been the impact? And what is the quantifiable evidence that demonstrates that? Because at the end of the day, you're going to be asking us that question and we have a responsibility to our families, our students, and, and our taxpayers to make sure that we're effectively using our resources the way that we, we, we got approval from the board to do and we were intending to do.
Thank you, ladies.
Yes, thank you.
We have to go back once you're finished.
We are, we're finished, yeah, thank you.
You know, we have, we have the group that...
Are there any other, well, any other questions needing time or... Sherry, was there anything else?
I'm good, I just wanted to just, you know.
Thank you.
To make that point, yes.
Pass that question.
Thank you.
And one point I would add too is that we differentiate from support. So not everybody needs support at the same thing and not everybody needs it to the same degree.
Right.
So, you know, it's been, as we've gotten to know the school leaders better, like, we're able to differentiate support that we provide.
I mean, I think there's a sense in the past, when, when central office came out, it had a punitive sense to it, historically.
You're right.
And I think there may still be some of feeling of that with some folks.
Well, as I said, we do evaluate.
Right, of course.
So in the end, we do evaluate.
Of course.
But we provide, we provide coaching cycles for them, we provide coaching cycles so that, and, and we tell them, we want them to succeed. They're our performance assessments, as I say. If they succeed, we've succeeded, you know. So, yeah, so I'm sure there is still some, you know, trepidation about...
Achievement, progress is happening, one would argue, fast enough. And so now you have things in place to try to be more on top of that and to capture any weaknesses.
I have to say that somebody said to me, well, we'll get to it.
Yeah.
And my response to that person was, we don't have time to get to it. Because these children will never have this particular opportunity again. They're here now. By the time we get to it, that opportunity will have been lost. So we call it the sense of urgency. And we're hoping that, and I think that we have a number of our administrators who really feel that sense of urgency. And we're excited about that.
Right.
We just need to give them the support that they need in order to do the best that they can do in the schools for the kids. You know, and that's where we are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're at the part of the meeting of public comments. I didn't see anybody signed up for public comments. I don't see anyone online, am I correct? Thank you, Dr. Strayer. Excellent to you. Close us out for the season. So hopefully these triads help the board acquire a deeper understanding of where we are at the midpoint of the year around our goals and what we hope to accomplish. I hope it gave an opportunity for Q and A about any questions or pieces of, of the work that you felt you needed more further clarification. We will be posting videos of the different triads tomorrow. Will be available as part of our YouTube channel for public access. And we're looking forward in June to engage in further discussion around the goals and meeting or exceeding all of the, all of the goals that the board set forward for us to move forward as part of our strategic plan. So thank you for your time tonight, I hope this was informative. Thank you, you and your team, very informative. I know that we learned a lot, we had a lot of questions, and thank you to everyone. So it's been a long day, long night. Motion to adjourn.